Ms. Mitchell, typically when we're appointing somebody to a board or commission, we want to just meet them first, ask a few questions, thank them for applying. That's what the process is today, and then hopefully if all goes well later in tonight's agenda, there'll be appointments, reports, and commissions, and at that time, there would be a formal motion if appropriate. So you're applying for the, for those, hopefully you can hear me, I've been flying a lot the last couple of days, so my ears are still closed. So if I don't sound off, please excuse me. You're applying to be an environmental advisory council alternate? Do you want to tell us just a minute or two why and thank you for applying, but what motivated you?
Because I'm very concerned about the environment, and particularly today, when everything seems to be going worse rather than better. So I thought rather than complain about everything all the time, I would try and do something about it, at least on my level.
Excellent. Supervisor Blundy, do you have any questions for Ms. Mitchell?
I don't. Thank you so much for volunteering. I love what you expressed about how we work together to make things better by getting involved. And so, thank you.
Supervisor McCartney?
I don't have anything to add, but thank you so much for your application.
As, thank you, as everyone else has said, and as a former member of the EAC myself, I think you're in, you've attended lots of meetings, as I understand it, and the group speaks highly of you. So when we get a recommendation from the EAC, we usually go with it. So.
To say I was lucky to know the main, I mean, the important people.
There's a few of them, right?
Jeanne's not actually a member, even though she runs the whole show. Don't get confused.
This is true. This is true. I won't keep you with questions, but I appreciate your volunteerism.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mitchell. And now we'll begin the formal call to order. And we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance and flag of the United States of America. Nation under God, indivisible, limiting justice for all.
Roll call Supervisor Blundy?
Here.
Supervisor McCartney?
I am here.
Supervisor Grunier?
Also here.
Supervisor Ross called in advance, he will be unable to join to join us this evening. So he will not be joining us. So we'll get into the community announcements section for today. During this portion of the meeting, this is when youth groups and community groups can offer announcements that can be read to the community, or they can actually come up and share them with themselves. So if you have a community announcement, you're more than welcome to walk up. But I want to start with the Yardley Farmers Market will be held at the Lower Makefield Township Community Center, 1550 Oxford Valley Road from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM, the first and third Saturdays from December 2023 through April 2024. So if you're looking for fine farm products, you're going to want to visit the Lower Makefield Township Community Center on the first and third Saturdays from 10 to 12. For more information, you can use view the Yardley Farmers Market Facebook page. Item number two, the Parks and Recreation Department is hiring for all seasonal summer positions, including pool, summer camp, and field maintenance. To apply, please visit www.lmt.org. Registration for the pool at LMT opened on January 29th. To register, also visit www.lmt.org. Item three, Lower Makefield Township's Parks and Recreation Department is looking for volunteers to help with the Five Mile Woods ADA accessible path on March 9th, 2024 from 8:30 AM, it's not that early, you can wake up that time, to 1:00 PM. If you are interested in volunteering, it will be an excellent time. Please contact Monica Tierney, and her email is monica t at lmt.org. And then the final Parks and Recreation notice is the Parks and Recreation Department and the Macklesfield Park Steering Committee will host a Macklesfield Park Open House on March 26th from 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM at the community center. The format will be a presentation style followed by the opportunity to visit theme stations. After the presentation, a video will be posted to the Zen City Project page where residents can watch the video and engage with different parts of the proposal. One other last announcement, it is Supervisor Grunier's birthday, and I was, I was going to offer a resolution wishing him a happy birthday, but I didn't think I could get the votes to pass. So.
I appreciate the comic relief.
Happy birthday, Jan.
Okay, yes.
And some, some of you may have been there, I don't know. This past weekend, this is from Pensbury, Pensbury had nine teams composed of about 60 kids from 12 different schools compete in the Odyssey of the Mind Regional Tournament at Temple University in Ambler. Six of the nine teams, I'm happy to report, will be participating in the state tournament in April. When you look at Odyssey of the Mind, there are three primary divisions. Division one was elementary school, calling us in here. Division two is the middle school, and division three was the high school. So it covers all levels of Pensbury. I was there, my daughter actually participated for the first time, and I thought I had never been to Odyssey of the Mind before, and I thought the kids were incredibly creative, and it was very neat to see. So congratulations to all who participated.
John?
Yeah. Ready to go, Pensbury? We're moving on to agenda item number five. This is the part of the agenda where we offer public comment on non-agenda items, but.
On Susanna's.
Yeah.
Ms. Blundy?
Yep. If I could just let people know, oh, look at me, I look very cool. I've got 80 of me on my screen. The blood drive was arousing success. There's, there's truly an issue right now with blood, and I thank the community for coming out. The Red Cross had anticipated we would get 20 vials, and we got 33, which is pretty much how our pattern runs. We're always able to deliver what's targeted, and even more because of the commitment from our community. So thank you. I actually had an experience at work this week, as someone who knows of my passion for this, because of my own family's experience, shared with me that their son is just been accepted to St. Jude's, and he is receiving transfusions from strangers. And these kind of things that we do really do make a difference in people's lives. So thank you to everybody. And as long as I'm on my soap. And as long as I'm on my soapbox, the announcement that you made, John, about the work at Five Mile Woods this week, I know there's at least one member of the community who's called in before and said that she doesn't understand this project, it's, it's become more of a passion of mine. There is something for everyone to help with to get this walkway, if I can call it that, up and running for those who are differently able to be able to enjoy a small portion of the park. So if you have any free time on Saturday, I would urge you to come by and lend a hand. I even can help, and as you all know, I'm not the most able body, but there's some, some way for all of us to pitch in, so I hope to see you there.
Awesome. With that, we'll move on to agenda item five, public comment on non-agenda items. So if you have public comment on something that's not on the agenda, you can come up now and share that with us. If you had an announcement that we didn't cover, you can share it with us. If we're gonna, when we talk about something that's on the agenda, you are also free to come up during that time and speak on that item, and if we miss you, and at the end, we have a separate, if there's any remaining public comment at the end, is there anyone on the phone? Now, is there anyone standing up ready to go? Not seeing anybody walk up? We'll move on to agenda item six, consider approval minutes for February 21st, 2024 meeting?
So moved.
Second with an amendment?
Would that be the spelling of your name?
It would be.
Yes.
I just asked that the minutes be corrected so that certainly on the page six, which is one of them?
Yes.
U N D I, it's right most of the other times, but if we could just fix that, that would be great.
Amended as requested?
And the second, okay.
She seconded it.
Yeah, with, with that motion, I'll call the question, all those in favor approving the minutes for February 21st, 2024, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. We're going to move on to agenda item seven, presentation of the 2023 Environmental Stewardship Award to the Master Gardener LMT Native Plant Demonstration Garden, and Jim?
I just want to make sure, is this working or not?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Firstly, good evening, members of the Board of Supervisors and members of the public. My name is Jim Bray, and I'm the current Chair of the Environmental Council in Lower Makefield Township. Tonight, I have the pleasant duty to assist in the presentation of the 2023 Environmental Stewardship Award. This award is being given to the LMT Master Gardeners Committee, and some of the members are here today, where's Cindy? Cindy is, Cindy is the chairperson, and there are several other members of the committee present, and they will have an opportunity to, you know, talk briefly after the award is given. Now, this award has been given since 2008, I think we've given this 15 times, and it's one of the most pleasant experiences that the EAC likes to get involved with. Now, I would also like personally to thank the Board of Supervisors for their generosity in supplying the EAC with an adequate enough budget to make events like this happen. It's not only this, but in the past, we've had notable speakers like Mike McGrath from You Bet Your Garden, we've had Doug Tallamy, who is probably the guru of the native plant movement in the United States, and coming up on April 20th, we have a real special treat for the people of Lower Makefield Township. We have a falconry exhibit, hands-on exhibit, that's going to take place on April 20th at the Memorial Park in Lower Makefield Township, so you'll receive plenty of publicity as far as that's concerned. The award also comes with a $1,000 stipend, and generally, the way it works, if the recipient is a, a, a non, I don't know, what's the word, nonprofit, they receive the money. If they don't, the award recipients get to choose from about four or five other environmental organizations in Lower Makefield Township. Now, I am just about ready to turn the floor over to John Lewis, but before I do that, I think after everybody hears John's remarks, there's not going to be any doubt in anybody's mind why the 2023 Environmental Stewardship Award was given to the Master Gardener Garden Committee of Lower Makefield Township. Thank you.
Thanks. The winner of the 2023 EAC Environmental Stewardship Award is the Master Gardener LMT Native Plant Committee. The vote at the December 14th EAC meeting was unanimous and reflected the hard work and dedication of this committee. The committee was formed and took over maintenance and planning duties of the native plant demo garden in the early part of 2022. This high-visibility garden is located on the Edgewood side of the administration building, and since the group has assumed responsibility, this industrious group of plant enthusiasts has done extensive weeding in the garden and has added many new native plants that reflect the importance that LMT attaches to the environmental benefits of native vegetation. LMT's innovative native plant ordinance was adopted in early 2007, far before many other similar ordinances. The committee has also done extensive mulching and created pathways through the garden that allow its beauty to be more easily observed. The future goals of the committee are exactly in line with the EAC's policy. This wonderful township asset, they are to educate the LMT community about the value of native plants to pollinators and birds, suppress undesirable weeds, and add plants as needed so that this public space continues to become a visual delight for township residents, and three, encourage our neighbors to incorporate native plants in their home gardens and other public areas. It's always a fun time every year to give out the award to these group of LMT residents who have done so much to help enhance the quality of life within Lower Makefield Township, and I have a plaque, and hopefully all of us can, will get up, if the whole group would come up, we can present this plaque to you.
This one here.
Well, it was a long call. We came out of the pandemic, and we knew the garden needed maintenance and love, basically, but thank you for giving the confidence to us. The garden was initially installed in like 2013 or 2000, Laura, Laura Brandt did that, 2009. It has been in, there's been plants that have seeded in, invasive plants, and we wanted to make sure that those were controlled, if not removed. We accomplished that, we did a great deal of weeding, as mentioned, and we did a big design effort to see what could be done to make sure that the plants that we wanted would come back, and those that we didn't would be suppressed. We'll see, this year will be the first year after this renovation, and so we'll see what takes over. We also have plans for this year to improve and add more things, and hope we can get the budget. We haven't seen it yet, you will. Thank you again.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to add another item to the agenda. I don't know if you want to.
Yes.
Hit yourself, I'll let you do it.
We have a very special, tonight's a special night for all of us here, we're recognizing leadership in the community and spirit and hope in the community, and for somebody who's provided over 20 years of dedicated service to Lower Makefield Township and the Environmental Advisory Council, we have a special plaque for Jim Bray. And Jim, before I, before I hand this to you, I want to say how much I've appreciated your help over the 20 years. You're not just an amazing master gardener, you're also the architect of our native plant ordinance, and just a really amazing asset to the community, and your, your service has been deeply appreciated by I know myself and all the board members and the community, and we're so, so pleased that you're a part of our community, and we thank you.
Is Jeannie there? Jeannie should be in the photos.
Let me make a presentation first. No few words yet. Louis jumped the gun. All right. First of all, everything looks very professional, you got the flags out and the new table, this is, this is, this is something else, looks great. Jim, first of all, Jean did a great job keeping this a secret. Secondly, yeah, well, then she did a great job. Perry and I are here to obviously extend our gratitude on behalf of the state and the entire community for your service in these last 20 years. There are many choices that people make in life, particularly when they're ready for retirement. Some decide that it's time to, you know, just enjoy themselves and play and do all those things, and others look to find some meaningful service to give. You took the latter course, and in these last 20 years, our community is, has been made much better as a consequence of that. For those who don't know, because you haven't maybe been following over that entire 20 years, let me just recap a little bit what you've done. As John Lewis mentioned before, you were the main architect of our native plant ordinance here in Lower Makefield, I think a first of its kind in the county, and something that really has gone a long way in helping to preserve the ecosystem of our, of our beautiful town. But it has become a model for other communities as well. But beyond that, you were also the driving force behind our low-impact development ordinance. For those who may not be familiar with that, Lower Makefield has an ordinance that requires, when new developments come in, that the impact that those developments have on our environment, and particularly for stormwater management purposes, is minimized. Obviously, if we'd had that ordinance in place 50 years ago, we would perhaps have fewer problems on it from a stormwater management standpoint than we do today, but nonetheless, it was a critically important step for the town, and in fact, it received an award from the environmental, from the US EPA, in fact. Beyond that, back in 2006, when we decided that we were going to give the EAC new authority to actually review land use plans when they came in, and then report to the Board of Supervisors regarding the impact of those proposed land use developments from an environmental standpoint, you embraced that fully, and you led the EAC in giving meaningful input to this and many previous boards of supervisors. Your dedication in all these things, and I would also mention our inventory back in, I think it was 2007, 2008, of our open space, remaining open space, and the fact that you and Alan Dresser and others did such a thorough job of inventorying every last piece of open space in Lower Makefield, and then ranking it in terms of those properties that would be most susceptible to potential development, to help guide the town in making decisions as to what to preserve moving forward. Those things all had a tremendous impact on our community. And throughout it all, you mentioned tonight some of the programming that the, the EAC is doing now, that's just a representative sample of what has happened over the last 20 years. It has made Lower Makefield a truly unique place and a leader when it comes to environmental protection. So it's not an overstatement to say that, you know, we can't thank you enough for all that work and that dedication, but I, what I want you to know is that you have made a difference, and you continue to make a difference. This is not over, you've got more work to do. We're just taking a pause here after 20 years to recognize everything you've done and to thank you for it. So I'm going to turn the microphone over to Perry in a moment, but we have certificates to present to you on behalf of the Senate and the House, as well as a flag of our Commonwealth that we have had flown over the state Capitol in your honor, so, Perry?
So I'd add, Jim, in addition to the tangible contributions that you've made to the community as expressed by the chairman and the senator, and is reflected in the certificate and the, and the plaques, the intangible contribution is reflected in all these folks who are here today, who share and have learned from your commitment to the environment and focused this community's interest and involvement so strongly on maintaining, preserving, and improving our environment. So there's, there's even more than, than we can express in words tonight, and so we thank you.
Wow, what a surprise. One of my good points, I think, is I'm very. my daughter Laura and my daughter Maggie.
Wow.
Wow. What a surprise. I think one of my good points is I'm very, very focused. The house could burn down, like Jean would say. If I'm working on something, I'll just get it done and then take care of the fire. But this is a total surprise because, again, I'm focused. I had no idea what Jean was involved in or anybody else. So, believe it or not, this is an absolute total surprise. I can't thank you enough for these awards. Now, at this stage of the presentation, people who get awards like this say the real, real driving force behind all these projects was some really, really good people on the Environmental Council. Now, the difference is, I really mean it, okay? So, thank everybody. We just had a great crew. We had a single purpose. We were results oriented, and we got tons of stuff done. And it's not over yet. I can't thank you all enough. This is very, very wonderful. Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item Eight, is the Birdtown, Pennsylvania presentation?
Hi, good evening. My name is Heidi Schreiber. I'm the president of Birdtown, Pennsylvania. And what a delightful evening to be here. Again, congratulations to Jim. Nice round of applause.
Yeah.
And also to the Master Gardener Group. I'm really honored to be here tonight to give you a short presentation about Birdtown, Pennsylvania. I guess if you could bring up my presentation would be really helpful. I could work through. I think it was downloaded. Here it goes.
Coming up.
Yay, wonderful. Great. Thank you. So Lower Makefield Township actually was a Birdtown way back in 2011 when the program was getting started. And it, I guess, fell to the side a little bit. And I'm so delighted that it is back on track with Jean's help and Jim's help and others. So I just want to tell you a little bit about the program and how it's changed. Next slide, please. So this is our mission. Birdtown, Pennsylvania works in partnership with local municipalities like yourselves and like-minded organizations to promote community-based conservation actions to create a healthier, more sustainable environment for birds, wildlife, and people. Next slide, please. So Birdtown's been actively engaging with municipalities in the state for over 12 years. There are now 50 programs across nine counties. We're owned by Pennsylvania Audubon Council, so we're no longer under Audubon PA. Audubon PA no longer exists. There's an Audubon Mid-Atlantic Regional Office now, and so they chose not to continue supporting the program. So we moved under Pennsylvania Audubon Council. We wanted to stay under the Audubon wing. And we're also building relationships and partnerships with other conservation groups such as We Can Serve PA, which runs the EAC Network for the state, Audubon Chapters, and also Bird City Network. Next slide. These are the different 50 Bird Towns across nine counties here in the state, and there's Lower Makefield highlighted. So I'm so, again, delighted for them, for the township to be back on board. Next slide. So why are we focused on birds? These are a number of reasons. I'm not going to read through everything, but birds are so important. They keep our ecosystems running smoothly. They bring us joy and beauty. They help us understand if the environment is healthy. They're everywhere, but they really need our help. With the breeding birding surveys, they show the populations have declined from anywhere from 30 to 77% since 1970, and the numbers are still declining. Next slide. The major threats to bird populations include the number one, which is loss of habitat. There are 40 million acres of lawns in the U.S. with 2 million here in PA. Cats, 2.4 billion birds are killed a year by cats. Window collisions, pesticides, climate change, invasive species, and also plastics are all major threats to bird populations. Next slide. So Birdtown helps address these issues through engagement, education, encouragement, support, inspiration, and promoting awareness. Next slide. And these are just a number of different examples of what Birdtowns can be doing. Anywhere from installing demonstration native plant pollinator and rain gardens, to reducing bird window strikes and pesticide use, educating about invasive plants, working with schools, and so on. Next slide. So what's new with our program? We've improved communication and networking between the Birdtown programs and also our conservation partners. Like I mentioned, we're owned by Pennsylvania Audubon Council. We created a new website. We have a new logo. We hold regional clutch meetings. We hold workshops and annual meetings. And we also have a new annual report structure for transparency and accountability. Next slide. So these are the ways that we're communicating with one another. It's with our Birdtown flyer, which is a newsletter for our Birdtown leaders. Bird Beat, which is a community newsletter, and then our Birdtown forum, which is a Facebook page. Next page. Next slide. These are our conservation partners. As you can see, many of them are Audubon societies. We also have Bird City Network. And like I mentioned, We Can Serve PA. Next slide. This is a little bit of information about PA Audubon Council, so they represent and support on providing resources and ideas to the 20 different Audubon chapters across the state. They are a 501(c)(3), so we're a nonprofit. Okay, next one. Next slide. This is our website, which provides a rich array of resources. It gives our list of our Birdtown programs and conservation partners. And we have a special back page just for the Birdtown leaders, which gives them more information. Next slide. This is the special information to get to the leader page, which Jean has, so we can go to the next slide. And this is just to share with you about the regional network. And these are the four different clutches that we have right now. So we have one in Montgomery County, Bucks County, Lehigh in Delaware, and Chester County. Bucks County is a really strong clutch group already. We've already met a number of times and have some great initiatives that we're moving forward. Next slide. This is our workshop series for this year. We have several different workshops that we provide our Birdtown leaders. The next one's on April 11th. It's protecting birds from pesticides. These are Thursday nights at 7:00 PM, and they're all virtual. Next. Is our annual meetings. Our next one is coming up on March 14th. It's our spring gathering where we come together and get, do inspirational information and ideas and some stories and so on. And then November 7th is our annual summit where we celebrate all the initiatives that were done for the year. Next slide. And this is what we hope that you'll include on our website, the logo and the information about the program. Next slide, please. And then these are the six strategy areas that we really encourage our Birdtown leaders to focus on for municipal actions, to habitat enhancement, to advocacy. Next slide. And then it's a four-tiered program. These are the different certification levels. Green is for new Birdtowns. Bronze is for all our older Birdtowns that are just getting back up and running. And then we really hope for them to move up to silver and gold. Next slide. So, thank you. Thank you so much to Lower Makefield Township. Really appreciate you becoming a Birdtown again and look forward to working with Jean and the rest of the EAC. So thank you again. I have two new Birdtown signs to present to you as the boards. If you could come up for some more photos, that would be great.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Mr. Chair, I just had a quick question for our township manager. If we haven't already done so, can we add that link to our homepage?
We, yes, we will, we will be doing that.
We will be doing that, okay. So if you didn't hear that, we'll be adding your link if you want to get her attention. We'll be adding the link for the, for the Birdtown to our homepage. Awesome. Thank you so much. Thanks.
Thank you, Heidi. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Nine, Parks and Rec. Do we have Monica here or?
Yeah, she's, she's.
She's coming up? Okay. We'll give everybody a minute here. And I think we have some wee blows in the audience. Am I correct?
Awesome. Actually, I didn't see one particular individual back there behind the podium. Young Jack over here, who has Moves Like Jagger, was part of my, one of the awesome OM teams.
Ah.
Do you need me to pull it up?
Wait, you picked a good one.
A fun one.
It's usually not this lively, for sure. Well, we'll invite you back to a more exciting meeting where we'll talk about details of stormwater management, paving, strategy at another time. So Monica, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. We'll give, we'll give folks just a minute to clear out and before, I don't want to. Doesn't matter. Yeah.
I can project.
Huh?
I can project.
You can project? Okay. So do you want to present? I guess before we do that, do you want to have a place a motion on the table?
So moved?
Second.
All right.
Motion. Should we say what the motion was?
Yeah. It's establish 2024 pay rates for seasonal Parks and Rec employees consistent with the adopted 2024 budget.
So moved.
Second.
I'm here for just that.
Okay.
Summer rates approved. The rates are in line with last year's rate. The difference is the camp director position. So just, but that was something that we budgeted for, for this year's summer camp. And we're still working on filling that position. So if there's any educators that are listening or watching this meeting, please apply. You can email me, monica t@lmt. That's shameless plug.
And why not make that plug one more time for those who might not have heard it the first time? Monica, who are we looking for? And what might they, who might they be? And where do they need to email?
We are looking for camp director and camp managers for summer camp this year. And we are hoping that you would apply if you're an educator. So please reach out to me, monica t@lmt.org if you are interested. Appreciate it. And I'd be glad to share any information with you by email or phone. So these are the summer camp rates. The camp director is the only thing that's different. All returning employees receive a 3% increase on their last year's wages. They also have the opportunity to move up among the ranks. So we really like to do that and train up our staff along the way. We do have a heavy return for the pool and summer camp this year, so we're excited to have some staff back. But we wanted to bring this before you tonight to codify it.
Excellent. Any supervisor comment? Any public comment? Any public comment on the phone? Nope. Hearing none. Call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Did we get Supervisor Blundy?
Yep.
Okay, so four zero?
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
That's all I have today.
Thank you. Item 10, police.
This item is to ask the board to authorize the transfer of a 2013 Tahoe with 106,533 miles on it from the police department inventory to the public works department.
Is there a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Any supervisor comment or question? Any public comment or question?
Use, reuse, recycle.
Yep, all right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Public Works Department, thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item 11, engineers, general project updates.
Thank you Chairman Lewis. With the pack this evening, we have included our engineer's report for this supervisor's meeting. I did want to highlight three projects that are included and of course, available for any questions for any of the others that are listed. The first one to highlight, we wanted to just mention updates for the Highland Drive Drainage Project as we are attempting to just keep everybody current with where the plans status is and moving into permitting and eventually to bidding phase to get the project built a bit later this year. We have our last meeting with the PA American Water Company on the 7th, which is tomorrow. That will finalize the relocation of their main. Pico Gas is also relocating their gas line in the project area. So that's really been the push to have that coordination completed, which will be part of the permitting that goes into the DEP. We're anticipating and hoping that permitting package goes in by the end of next week, which will start the clock for their review and look to get that back. Hopefully, within about a month is typically their range for receiving some response from the DEP. During that time, we'll also look to continue putting together the full bid package. So when we get the permit approvals, we'll be ready pretty much to go to advertisement shortly thereafter, before which we'll be obviously requesting from the board to start that bidding phase. For another one to highlight this evening, we wanted to just mention the timetable for the road program for this year. So it is currently out to bid. The first advertisement was today. That will be advertised once more, as is required, on the 12th with the bid opening scheduled for March 27th. So we do anticipate a recommendation for the road program at the April 3rd Board of Supervisors meeting. And then shortly thereafter, we'll put together the contracts and look to get that scheduled for work a little later as the weather warms. The third project we did want to mention as an update is for the Woodside Road Bike Path or multi-use path, I should say. As we've been coordinating with Pico and Verizon, the two owners of the utility poles that they've been, you know, scheduling to have moved and shifted to allow the trail to be completed. They did respond back to us and are looking to have that coordination done within about the next two to three weeks. So there, you'll see some poles start to arrive at the site. That'll be the first thing. And then they'll actually dig the holes and put the new ones in and then take the old ones out. So that process is moving along about the pace they told us it would when we coordinated with them for that relocation. And then as soon as that is complete, we'll look to finish those sections of the trail. And that timing should work well with the warming temperatures where you're allowed to get asphalt and pave to complete those portions of the trail. So as mentioned, if there's questions on any other projects that we have ongoing, I'd be happy to answer. But we did want to provide those updates tonight.
Supervisors, have any questions?
Real quick, I know you were talking about process and some are going for permits right now. If you were to guesstimate, I'll use that word, timing for the completion of the Highland Drive project, what's your estimate right now for when it could go to construction?
As mentioned, the permitting process, like 40 days, 30 to 45, if you get the kind of like a round.
Aggressive, but yeah.
Yeah. If it's a quick permitting process, we're aiming for, you know, the second April meeting or perhaps the May 1st meeting for having everything ready to ask for the bidding process. But we are planning to wait for that permit approval before having the bid documents be advertised. Because as we learned with other projects in recent years, it's not good to get the cart before the horse there.
All right. So it personally could be as late as June, but it won't be August, what we're looking at.
Yeah, everything that we are preparing at this time and coordinating with, we're looking at summer for the construction of the project.
That's, that's what I figured.
And if there's any delay with that permitting process, we'll obviously update everyone and, you know, that'll shift accordingly. But we're hopeful that with our discussions with DEP, that that'll help expedite the review and approval process.
Need any assistance in that matter, let us know.
Definitely will. Thank you.
Any other supervisor questions? Any public questions or comments? Anyone on the phone? No? No, okay. No, okay. I'm still working on getting the whole, uh, you know, callers and stuff like that. I didn't train in talk radio, so always need to check in. Uh, moving on to Agenda Item 12, the manager's report.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh, the first item, uh, on my section of the agenda is to consider, uh, the proposal from Zelenkovsky Axle Rod or ZA for auditing services, um, for the, um, uh, fiscal years ending, uh, December 31st, 2023, uh, 24 and 25. Um, as the board is aware, um, we request, we, we issued a request for proposals, um, back in, uh, January of, of this year. There were, um, uh, the RFP was sent directly to, to seven firms. And, uh, uh, actually we only had a single response, uh, to, to the RFP process. We've reviewed, uh, ZA's response to the RFP. The response is, is complete, uh, and we would recommend the engagement of, of ZA for purposes of, of, um, preparing the audited financial statements for the fiscal years that, that I outlined, uh, 23, 24 and 25.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to consider Azalek Zelenkovsky's Axle Rod LLC's proposal for auditing services.
Second.
Any questions from supervisors about this? Uh, public questions? No one on the phone? Okay. Uh, with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor of awarding Zelenkovsky and Axle Rod LLC, uh, auditing services proposal signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, that's four zero. Agenda Item, uh, B.
Uh, so the next item is an item that you had previously authorized advertisement of. Uh, it's an ordinance amending the definition of open space, uh, within the zoning, uh, and subdivision land development ordinances. Uh, again, this is a, a definition, uh, that was previously incorporated into, uh, the broader amendments that were made, uh, last year, uh, relative to the requirement for developers to provide open space in addition to other, um, other park and rec areas and so forth as part of land development, uh, projects. The definition, uh, consistent with the board's direction, uh, at the time that we had authorized, uh, advertisement. Uh, now as, uh, one of the enumerated examples does note that athletic fields, um, shall not, um, constitute open space. Uh, again, that's consistent with the, uh, with the board's direction. Uh, the ordinance has been, uh, reviewed by both, uh, the township planning commission, uh, and the county planning commission. Uh, both entities recommending approval, uh, and the, uh, ordinance has also been duly advertised. So with that, um, it is ready for the, uh, for the board's consideration.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to approve the ordinance amending the definition of open space with the zoning and subdivision and land development ordinances.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Uh, any supervisor comment, question?
So this, this has already been advertised, right?
Yes.
Yep. So we voted advertise it. Yep, went through and now it's, this is just officially in the.
If it's passed tonight, it'll become immediately effective. So any applications after this day, we'll have to comply with it.
Mr. Trulove, can you refresh my memory on exactly what the, uh, specific change was? The amendment?
Amendment, I mean, in terms of what before we advertised, I mean?
Correct.
It was to add the term athletic fields as part of that, uh, the definition of, that they are not, do not qualify as open space. That was the one little provision that was changed.
Is it specific to what type of athletic fields?
It is not.
The, I mean, if I could just back up the, the, the initial sort of, um, uh, genesis for this, um, related to the issue that the solicitor just noted, uh, but was also to, um, specifically exclude, um, impervious surfaces from the definition of, of open space. So things again, um, you know, whether it's courts, basketball courts, tennis courts, uh, pool facilities, all facilities that, that may be located in a, in a, in a development, but consist of impervious surface. It, it was excluding those. And then, um, when we brought it to the board for your consideration the last time, uh, the, the motion that was made and acted upon, uh, as part of the authorization advertised was to specifically list athletic fields as being excluded from the definition of open space.
Part of the reason for that is recreational space is, is defined to include athletic fields within ordinances. Whereas open space is, is also defined separately and with our, with our ordinance, with our, our, what we refer to as our open space ordinance that we've been talking about. There is a difference between recreational space and open space. So it's to be, make sure that it's consistent so that. I will eat the microphone, yes. It, it's, so it's to make sure that developers and others who are applying for, uh, site plan approvals and whatnot through our SAD though, uh, do not attempt to take credit for open space. Uh, you know, they do have to provide recreational space, but we don't want them double dipping and we want them, we want to make sure that they do both. So we want to make sure that they're clearly defined in the ordinances moving forward. It's not to prevent athletic fields at all. That's, that's, I don't want that to be a misconception. It was specifically to make sure that the definitions are clear so that on our end, we can manage it accordingly. And that, so it's clear to developers that open space is one thing, recreational space is another, and they have, they're on the hook for both. That's, that's really the driver here. It's not to limit either one.
Can they choose one over the other?
No, they, they would have to meet both requirements. So, so there still would be, um, the, um, either, as many do, they, they choose to do fee in lieu of, uh, park and rec, uh, land dedication, uh, they, they make that choice. But to the extent that they want to dedicate land, uh, and improve land, uh, to meet, um, the requirements of the ordinance as it relates to park and rec facilities, they, they would do that. In addition to that, they would have an obligation to provide open space. So, um, it's not, uh, abdicating or reducing that responsibility. That responsibility still exists. Um, and, uh, they still would have the, um, obligation to meet the, the requirements of, of the, um, either parkland dedication or fee in lieu of, as it relates to park and rec land. Um, and then they would also have this open space requirement as well. So it's an additional requirement, not one that supersedes the, the prior requirement.
And roughly percentage wise, if you knew off the top of your head, what the ordinance says as far as percentage wise, that it has to be recreational and that it has to be open space?
Yeah, so it's a minimum of 25% is what the, what the ordinance establishes.
Combination of both?
And that's not this ordinance, that's the ordinance that we passed several months ago.
Correct. I believe it was in August of 2023, you had amended that required open space dedication in addition to park and land, park and rec obligations as well. Again, most are not dedicating land as part of, to meet that obligation. Most are choosing to do a fee in lieu of, as it relates to park and rec. But that, that was the minimum requirement, 25, 25% of a track would, would be dedicated to open space.
And this, this ordinance would apply to all new, uh, new applications effective. If it passes tonight, it would be tomorrow.
Correct, yes.
So anything that's already in the.
The pipeline would not have to comply unless we negotiate with.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. That's all I had.
So I just wanted to make sure I'm following because I know I was confused the last time. I think I might remain confused. And you used the term double dipping. And when I hear that, it sounds like getting credit on two different columns for the same thing. But that's not what you mean, I don't think, right? You mean saying that somebody couldn't agree to have open space and paint soccer field lines around it and then build a soccer field with soccer field lines around it. That would not count going forward because while they had the official field, they used their open space as also a field and they wouldn't be allowed to do that. Correct.
So. So open space versus athletic fields, right? Or, and if there's an open space that is not dedicated to athletics, it's not, um, a complex, a sports complex. It's not, oh, you know, it's, it's a meadow that is allowed, for, for whatever reason, doesn't have resource protection. So like, say a wetland, for example, that has herbaceous vegetation that might be dry and you could run around on it. Um, this would not limit people in any way from using the space. Right? If it's, if it's, it's the requirements of open space, right? Uh, again, unless it's resource protected somehow, but I don't know that we have anything that tells people you can't go for a walk in the woods. You know what I mean? Uh, or, or something like that. And I wouldn't, wouldn't want to do that.
Thank you. And then, um, Dave, did I hear you correctly saying that most developers, to the extent that there's any more development coming, most developers choose rather than to build fields, athletic fields, to donate cash fee in lieu of. So it's not like we have like fields popping up all over the place.
That is, that is correct. And then so in those circumstances, again, there's a, there's a parkland dedication requirement, which again, most choose to meet that requirement through fee in lieu of, as opposed to physical dedication of land area. This on top of that would, would require some land dedication to open space purposes. Not necessarily dedication of the township, but, but reservation for open space purposes.
Thank you.
I just have another question now that, that Ms. Blundy, uh, sparked in my mind. Um, so in the grand scheme of things, if we are in a situation where there's a demand for athletic fields and we have an opportunity to have developers put athletic fields in new development, this steers them in that direction or it, does it deter them? Because now we're asking them to do two things in the development, one being open space and the other being athletic fields.
They've always been responsible for both. So instead, so what we could do instead of asking for, you know, most of them fall back on fee in lieu just because that's what they do for recreational space. We'd say, well, instead of fee in lieu, uh, to build us a field.
Sure.
Uh, but it would still all fall under the recreational requirement. It, whether, whether it's, um, that I don't think, you could correct me if I'm wrong here, but I don't think they, that would not cover any open space requirements, uh, within our open space.
Yeah, there's, correct. Those are separate, those are separate requirements, so.
Still have to do both.
Just hypothetically, and again, just to try to simplify if, and then I'm just going to throw out random numbers. If, let's just say that, um, based on the number of lots, uh, that were proposed, it required an area to be dedicated, which is equivalent to 25% of a lot, right? A growth, and then you have another 20. So in that circumstance, 50% of that lot, 25 would be dedicated for parkland, 25 would be dedicated for open space. And then the remaining 50 would be developable in that scenario. So, so again, it's, it's, it's creating an additional requirement, which may, may or may not. It, it may not, again, they could choose, okay, well, we'll meet the open space requirements. And as it relates to the parkland requirement, we're gonna, we're gonna do a fee in lieu of instead of the dedication of land.
Do you think that that's the way they're gonna, they're gonna?
I mean, that's probably what they're gonna do because they're gonna try to, I mean, they're gonna try to. But, but again, at that point, under the existing ordinance, whereas before you had these open space requirements, you essentially would have had no open, you would have had the, the majority of the parcel being, being developed. I'm sorry, in, in terms of the, the use. Now they have a requirement to do minimum of 25% open space. And then they could potentially do more if they wanted to meet their park, park obligations. But in the area that's, that's being dedicated to open space, you could not have athletic fields on, on that space.
Just trying to figure out a way of steering it so that we get some type of recreational use or some.
Yeah, no, I think what we could do is during the process, right? Rather than saying, you know, when, when they say fee in lieu, we can, we get in front of them early and say, you know what? This time around, let's look at something else.
Maybe then the ordinance shouldn't say, shouldn't give them the out of, you know, fee in lieu then, right?
That, that's a requirement of the municipality's planning code. So, so the choice, the choice of selection is even at their discretion, not at, not at your discretion.
Yeah. That's all I had.
I think this inadvertently, you know, I know it's not the intent, but I think the way we're talking about it, because there's even the overlay of impervious space or, so maybe people think we're talking just about basketball courts and we're not. So I, surprise, still voting against it. I think, I think we mean well, but I don't think the language is right.
I, you know, I a hundred percent disagree. I think we have to be very deliberate in how we write this so that, you know, developers don't try to, uh, take advantage of our ordinances based on the wording. So I think we have to be very deliberate.
As I said, I, I totally agree with the intent, but I think this has the unintended consequences of not getting any fields. Getting, because we can't tell them, you must give us fields instead of paying us money. They're going to keep paying us money and we're going to get open space, but we're not going to get fields. So, which I don't think is our intent, but that's what's gonna happen.
That's, that's state law though, right? We can't change that.
Yeah, the FBC.
Oh, but, but we don't have to prohibit them from saying it's one or the other, right? Because a, a soccer field is in fact open space.
No, it's not actually.
Well.
A treated soccer field where it, where it's just a mowed field and it's treated with, with, uh, herbicides and pesticides and fertilizers and whatnot, does not provide, the intent of open space is not to, not to overly treat, make it a treated lawn, which is, which in effect is what a soccer field is. Soccer fields provide a great benefit to those that play soccer from a recreational perspective. But from an open space perspective, they, soccer fields, golf courses, things of that nature are, the way they are managed is actually quite terrible for the environment, um, generally speaking. And there's lots of literature on that.
So we can agree to disagree because I, I do know that your heart is in the right place. But I just think that this has the unintended consequences of saying we won't be getting any more recreational space as part of any future development.
And I think that's my concern on it is, are we, are we handcuffing the developer or ourselves to being able to have, having somebody install athletic fields in the future?
Well, I can enter in slightly on that. Going back to many of the prior land use discussions we've had over the years, really haven't had, I think absent Prickett Preserve, where there was some dialogue about that. Um, and, um, there were some ideas discussed around that. But I think in that case, the developer was more interested in the concept that they had as far as a general meeting place, uh, and sort of a gazeboed, uh, pathway for folks. Um, that was the only, in recent memory, unless I could be wrong, where there was enough open space that was appropriate, that could be potentially, uh, a, a potential, uh, record, a field, if you will. I'm trying to think of any others. I, I'm not coming up with any. I know that there are some others that are on tap that, that may have that capacity in the future. Uh, and I think in, with these cases, it's important to remember, unfortunately with the MPC and the way property laws are in Pennsylvania, we don't always have the option to force as much as we might push, uh, with developers, um, those options. But I think it's important for us to continue to look for them as well. And I know there's one upcoming where that could be a discussion down, down the road. Um, and, and we might have some leverage on that. And, uh, you know, but we haven't been presented, I mean, we've seen plans over the years for that one. I won't get into the details. Uh, but that's one, maybe we, we have a shot at that, uh, as part of a compromise situation. So I think it's, uh, some of these are very case dependent as to what the developer is willing to do. I think the intent, the original stuff that was passed in 2023 is designed to give us more tools and more options. And unfortunately, sometimes recent developers aren't interested in those, right? As, as you know, we've worked on a, a particular case with a developer was, I have a by right to do this. And that's kind of what they, and it was unfortunate because I think the motivation of the then-chair, who I think spearheaded this was to try and give an alternative to what, you know, has been pushed since then. So, um, that's the kind of balance here. I don't know that definitionally changes those kinds of outcomes, but, and it, but that's a fair discussion and, and it's good. I think collectively for all of us to think through these things when we get, uh, development plans from developers and where we can come to a unified, uh, discussion element, where we might be most effective and persuasive. I, you know, that's something we need to do. But I think that's kind of separate from this today. Is there any public comment about this proposed ordinance?
I had one follow-up, one follow-up question. So again, in my mind, I'm trying to figure out how this would work. If a developer decides to do, uh, recreational space and the, the, the ordinance doesn't include athletic fields, you know, to Dan's point, is there, who, who, who manages this space?
We just had a sidebar about that, and I think that's one of the challenges for the recreation space being included. But not, I mean, as it stated now, I think it makes sense because if you have recreational space, if a developer wants to do that, really insists on it, undoubtedly at some point, it's going to turn back to the township to maintain it.
Correct.
And I think that creates other issues too, for the township to be part of that. Cause at least now it has control. Cause at least now it has control over its own property that it, that it maintains for those purposes. And, and it can do that. I'm not saying it's, it's, it can't be done, but it's almost like a patchwork situation. And I, I'm not suggesting we don't need more recreational facilities. That's not at all what I'm suggesting. It's somebody who coached baseball for 20 years. So, I mean, I, I understand the need for that, but I, I.
Yeah. And I, even within the definition of recreational space, I look at basketball courts or pickleball courts or something with impervious surface as a different, as a, as a field, right? As an open field that can be used as recrea, I, I approach those two as two completely different things. But I, I'd be interested to see who would be in charge of, i- is there going to be a working agreement with the developer of who's going to manage that field? If there's a putt, if there's.
Every single developer will have a different situation.
Yeah.
We do it, we have to.
Is it, yeah, I'm just saying, you, you're saying in terms of the land that's being dedicated to meet the parkland dedication requirements?
Correct.
I mean, ultimately those are being, those are, that's physical dedication to.
Township.
Township.
So we're responsible for.
Or when they dedicate, when they dedicate physical land.
Regardless whether it remains open space or athletic fields, we're still going to be responsible for.
Well, no, the open space requirements, again, which were new requirements, require the, require the submission of a management plan at the time of the development. So identifying ownership, maintenance responsibilities, those kinds of things are, that, that's all a requirement that exists on the open space side, but does not exist on the, on the recreation side, on the parkland side.
I would say that a number of the more recent developments have had HOAs and to the extent that there are either public areas or fields like in Spruce Mill, when the Dog Park used to be a soccer field, that was, the burden was on them. And so to, to make a blanket statement, what it is or what it's not, without actually seeing the development agreement before us, could lead us down the wrong path. So again, I, I appreciate what we're trying to do. I just don't think the language is there.
Any other supervisor comments, questions? I, I believe there's one caller on the line. Caller, can you tell us your name and, uh, whether you live in Lower Makefield Township or not?
Yeah. Hi, uh, this is Mike Brody, Lower Makefield Township, uh, 509 Brookbank Court. I just wanted, I'm, I'm also on the parking rec board. Uh, I, I wholeheartedly agree with Supervisor Blondie. I'm drastically concerned about what this does to the board, uh, to the, to the, the parking rec and the setup. I really wish this would have been presented to the parking rec board also before being proposed forward. I feel like we should have been given an opportunity to, to ask questions and to see, uh, before we change classifications of different lands and park rec facilities.
Yeah, I.
Table?
Yeah, you can, you can table. I just want to make sure it's understood. This, this is simply a definitional change. The, the open space requirements, the, the foundation that, that we're.
Sure.
Is already a, is, has been adopted by the Board of Supervisors in August of, of 2023. So.
Yeah, I think.
Just want to make sure that there's an understanding that this isn't a whole, a wholesale change. This is a, this is a definitional amendment.
Well, yes, I think the specific verbiage of athletic fields is what's got everybody kind of.
Well, historically speak, let's give an example, right? During the whole, over the last several years with snipes, the folks would come in and argue that building a sports complex was providing open space to, to the, to the community. The other side was saying that's not open space, it's a sports complex. It has its own benefit as a recreational complex for, to provide for sports, but it, it is by definition not open space. And that can be supported through all kinds of different literature on the topic, whether it's scientific or through planning literature. That's, it's, it's not something that really can be argued. But that's part of the argument is that somehow, some way, uh, some type of sports complex is open space and therefore you, we, that's because of whatever study, we don't have enough open space and that, that would check that box. That's, and that, that's been an argument for fields by stakeholders that want more fields. And that's, we, we're looking at more fields, but open, providing open spaces, not an argument for more fields, flatly. But we still need more recreational space. And that's not what this definition is trying to do is to make an argument for one or the other. We need both. And we're still, by our ordinances, we're required to provide, or not us, the developers are required to provide both. Right? It's not like this says, all you're going to do is give us open space. It's like, no, you gotta give us open space. But hey, guys, you still need to give us, you still need to give us recreational space. The issue we have with that, in my opinion, is the state's M P C municipal planning code gives them an out on, on, um, specific to recreational space because of the fee and lieu program, which kind of stinks.
Yeah.
Right? We, we can use that, the, the theory behind that is that we can take those fees and, you know, the fees that are in lieu and give it to our parking rec department to do something else. It, and maybe a bigger space, right? If we have the money to do it or improve our current, whatever we want to do, that's the theory behind fees and lieu. It's like we have a sidewalk fee and lieu to, to do that wherever possible. You know, it would be nice if the state gave us a little more flex, I, I guess in theory that is them trying to give us some flexibility in how to do that. But it would be nice if we could, if we could force the, the, when we wanted to, it would be nice to be able to force, to force that on them, to, to provide that space. Unfortunately, we can't. So it's not a definition issue. It's just what we're allowed to force them to do versus what we aren't because of the state planning code. That's how I read it. Dave, did I say anything incorrect there?
No, I mean, the M P C is, is, is designed for developers. I'll be blunt about it. I mean, in Pennsylvania, it's a very diverse state. Uh, and you have places that want to develop as much as they can because of the ratables and everything else, because they have, the, the economy has been depressed for so long. This area is not like that. We're very different in this part of the state, this part of the Commonwealth and so much of the rest of it. So, but it applies across the board. So we can't make a different rule, like a home rule here that's different from what the state law does. That's, that's just the way it is. And I, we talked about that in other contexts with stormwater management and, 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 uh, and it's, it's frustrating. I'll be the first one to admit it because from a lawyer's perspective, there's a lot of things you'd like to do. But state law as it is right now, as the courts interpret it as well, is very clear. So.
If Mr. Brody has nothing else to add, I'd like to call the question.
Was there a question?
I made, uh, the mo, the motion to table?
You have to have a second for that.
Is there a second to table? I'll table, I'll second.
And is a vote on the motion to table then right now?
Okay. I'll call a question on motion to table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Nay.
Nay.
So then I guess it would revert back to.
The original motion.
The original motion.
Correct.
Okay.
So can I ask a procedural question?
Sure.
So we're, we're obviously missing a supervisor this evening who has strong opinions on this as well. He will not be afforded the opportunity to vote because of personal circumstances. That's why I moved the table out of respect for him. If this ends up at a two, two, it fails, right? Can we bring it up at a future meeting or would we have to re-advertise?
We have to re-advertise.
Okay. You can do that.
Out of respect to the other supervisor, if you want to motion to table, please do again.
I do that? Move the table?
Second. All those in favor of tabling signify by saying aye.
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 And that was three, one then on the motion to table?
No, I'm, I'm with the.
Oh, okay. You're with the majority on that one. Okay. Awesome.
I would just, as we, as we think about it, to try to take into account the caller's comments and maybe look at this language that could meet everybody's concerns.
I, we'd be certainly happy to talk to the caller and discuss this further if, uh, they want more detail on, on the process and how it went through. And, uh, I know we have a member of the planning commission in attendance that, who reviewed it, uh, and who wrestled over this issue among other issues associated with it, um, in that.
Parking reps are saying they didn't know about it.
The motion to table, by the way, there's no definite dates being brought back. So I think as if, whatever process you want to take to have it viewed or discussed, that's obviously up to you. And then, you know, we can bring it back whenever you decide. So.
Dave, would you like to talk about agenda item 12C?
Yeah. So the, the next item is an item that, uh, was, was raised by, uh, actually Supervisor Ross, uh, at your, at your last meeting. Concerning use of a consent, uh, agenda, uh, for routine or ministerial sort of agenda items. And so, uh, I don't know if you want to delay this conversation or whether you want to have this conversation.
We can certainly have it now. And, um, by way of, um, one of the things that, that we look at when running meetings is how do we make sure that the majority of the meeting focuses on the most important parts, uh, and make sure that everyone has an opportunity to, uh, have input, right? Um, and part of that's, you know, we want to make sure we have open public comment, which we try to do both beginning, end and during agenda items. But there are a number of things that we do that are extraordinarily routine that are perfunctory. And many municipalities will batch all those up in a consent agenda. And the way that would work is that if any member of the board or any member of the audience objected to any of the items in the consent agenda, that can be removed and the remaining items could be passed. And what that would do is help improve, uh, meeting focus to items where there are concerns. Now, the advantage of this is potentially somewhat shorter meetings. And Lower Makefield has had meetings that have gone to, I believe, four in the morning is, uh, is one, one such.
Reporting on executive sessions that occurred the previous day.
Yes. Uh, so those things do occur and, and, um, and usually when there's a very contentious issue. And also, uh, this could help reduce meeting time and allow you to focus on issues that are of most concern. However, prior to kind of dropping that into the agenda process, I wanted to have this discussion with folks so that, uh, we talked about, A, making sure that everybody feels that the process is trustworthy, that they know that they have the information such that if they had a concern on an agenda item, they could immediately remove it and that everybody felt comfortable with that. Uh, and B, I also wanted to gauge input from both my fellow supervisors in an open session as well as, uh, members of the community about using that. And, and for example, tonight, obviously tonight was a very unique agenda in that we had some very special and, uh, very positive, uh, awards to, to hand out. But we also had items approving minutes or approving, um, and I'm excited about that Tahoe getting a second life in service of public works. But those are ones that should be relatively perfunctory and should be non-controversial, unless somebody didn't clean that Tahoe before the transition. But that I wanted to get the community's input about using a consent agenda before adopting it, uh, in creation of the agenda. And that's what today's discussion is about. And, uh, what I would offer is the chance for supervisors to offer comment, public comment, and talk about potentially how to make that work in a way that people feel comfortable with. Because I don't want it to be used as a, a, a way to hide things or not share. I'd rather it be a way for us to share as much as possible and execute quicker.
Well, Mr. Chairman, you know how much I enjoy a long meeting until the wee hours of the evening. So I would be in favor of this. Clearly with the methodology that you just spoke of, of making sure that we're not hiding any agenda items. We're streamlining the meetings, um, you know, keeping the professionals here only as long as we need them to be, um, on the clock. And, um, and of course engaging as much public, uh, interaction on, on the hot topics that we have. So I would be in favor of this.
My only concern is purely procedural. I feel like this should have been under other business. So it could have stood, stood out more. And that way we would have really gotten some input from people. But I am used to consent agendas in my professional life and I fully support them. I just want to make sure people understand.
Along those lines, in that discussion, some of the stuff that we could, could we present or produce more information when we release the agenda on those consent agenda items? So the people have the detail around them. So if they want to dig in and learn more about that Tahoe, they can get the briefing on that, just as a humorous example, so that they would have more insights in it. That would be a process potentially change, um, that we'd have to think about and providing more detail for people when we release the agenda.
Yeah. And then to your point, that's, that's my only con, concern might be too strong a word. With consent agendas is that there may be, um, in the rush to get out agendas sometimes, not all the information is readily available, uh, with, for agenda items. Not always allowing for enough time to review in detail. So when it's, consent agendas do put a lot of onus on, on board members to review things in detail ahead of time to make sure they're okay with everything. So, um, generally speaking, I think it's a good idea as long as we can get the information out and then make sure that stuff that the public may want to comment on or better understand is readily available to them.
A couple of questions along those lines of starting to get general board perspect, perspective on this. The question of callers is always an important part because we've now opened up the meeting in that way. So would people feel comfortable if a caller came in and said, yes, I'd like to remove a general item one, two, and three, or, or three and six, versus somebody who's actually in the, in the, uh, in the, a board member or audience member and then caller? People would feel comfortable allowing people to just call in and say, okay, remove that from the consent agenda. That would be okay with folks, you think?
I think you'd have to be, I think you actually have to be fair to everybody across the board that way.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I understand where you're going with that. But I think, um, if you're going to do, you know, good for one, good for all, I guess, is what I would say. So.
Yeah.
Would that, I know other, other boards and other townships, I've, I've looked at their, their, their board supervisor stuff, their websites, and some of them put out meeting packages on websites. You know, SharePoint sites, wherever they may be. That's not something we've historically done for everything, but major stuff I think we have. Is that something that we should consider moving forward if we're going to do consent agendas?
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I, yeah, I don't, I don't know that there's any, any issue with that. I mean, again, prior communities that I've worked with, we've, we've provided the entire meeting packet with the supporting documentation, uh, accessible on, on the website. So if that's the desire of the board, uh, to, uh, start that practice, there's nothing that's, uh, limiting from, you know, from a technology standpoint or, uh, anything of that nature that would prevent us from doing that. Simply, you know, scanning an agenda, maybe having, um, you know, sort of a short form, uh, if somebody's just interested in the, the agenda, but then a subsequent, you know, attachment that may have all of the supporting documentation as well. So that, that's not a problem at all.
I, I would say that there's one reference point, if you want to look at it, it's school districts. Many of them use, uh, consent agendas as well. I'm not saying that's why you do it, but almost all of them offensive end, you use a platform called Board Docs.
Yeah.
And so there's a, a, a public site and there's also one for the, for the, uh, members. But the only one for the members would be something that would have attorney client or something that's not public. But the other stuff is all there for the public. So if you want to take a look sometime, say go to one of the school districts, just look at where, at where the, the dropdown for board docs and it'll, it'll have all those attachments of those items. So just an example.
The, the one thing I would suggest along that discussion item, which would be, uh, bless you, is that, um, we want to make sure that board members get access to all the docs and the board docs before they become public. And the reason why I say that is no one likes to get calls or emails late at night and not know the particulars. And you might not have had a chance to read, right? And, and, and we have some, some residents who, who are, uh, hyper engaged. And that, that's a good thing. Uh, but we just need to make sure we have a little time where a board member has that before it's public, uh, for them.
To your point, sometimes those agendas are draft when they first go out, right?
Yeah.
So having that information, because sometimes you may see some say, you know what? It's probably not ready for prime time for that agenda. We want to remove it. So that's why, another reason to do it that way.
And, and maybe we start slow on this, like the least objectionable, simple items, do one, two or three and see how that works. And, and depending on the agenda, it, you know, it, it may only be two or three in an agenda. It may be more in a particular one. But I wanted to have that sort of, uh, initial discussion around that. Is there other discussion from supervisors about that at all? Any public discussion? No? Okay. We have a member of the, uh, of like.
Adrian Costello, 2122 North Crescent Boulevard. I'm not very familiar with this, but I guess the one, one thing is would there be, like on, I guess the chair puts the agenda together. Okay. What if you put a time constraint, like one week before the meeting? Anything that's in the consent agenda has to be published, the documents available to the public. Or I'm, I'm making up a week. It could be three days, whatever makes sense. And then if, if you don't make that deadline, then the only way to get it on the agenda is put it as a separate agenda item. So you get, you get the discussion and people can get educated about it and just codify that. That's the suggestion.
Okay.
When I was chair years ago, that kind of, it wasn't codified, but that's what I used to do. I don't have the whole package by a certain date.
Yeah.
At the meeting, it's not going to go in.
It doesn't go in the agenda. Yeah. Uh, but this is typically for stuff that we know about, like, uh, but yes, I agree. And we've, yeah, I want to listen. And the, the challenge is the. And the challenges, the ones that, things like developers who are late with their package, those are things that are not going to be on an agenda because there's discussion and there'll be dialogue, but.
I guess any, any additional, you know, direction you can provide to us. And again, as, as the chair noted, it could, it sort of can be baby steps in terms of use. You know, but other towns, for example, will put financial security releases, which are generally more ministerial and routine in nature under, under a consent agenda. Again, I, I don't know how you feel about that, whether you want those. I mean, again, you would have the ability to pull those items. And just so it's clear, it's not, I mean, every individual item would be listed under a consent agenda. So it's, it's not a matter of, you know, you taking some sort of blind action on items or the public not being aware of what those items are. And as you said, anybody could pull an individual item for additional discussion. But I, I don't know, is there any additional thought on sort of the contents, I guess, of the agenda item beyond minutes, treasures report? Those kinds of things are typical items that are typically on a treasures or on a, on a consent agenda. And I don't, we don't need an answer now, I guess, I just.
And we test our way into that and maybe we learn what causes people to, like for example, I jokingly referred to the Tahoe. It's a very, you know, straightforward thing. But, and we maybe test our way in as we go on that. If, if there's no other comments from either public or board members, we could move on to manager's report for 12D.
Okay, so the next item is an item that was again discussed at your last meeting related to the authorizing the township solicitor to prepare an LGBTQ plus inclusive local non-discrimination ordinance for the board's review and consideration. Again, it was an item of discussion and an item that was not specifically listed on the agenda. So there were some members that expressed a preference to bring this back as an explicit agenda item on the, on the, on, on this, this agenda. So consistent with that direction, we're bringing it back for your consideration.
And this would be the formal authorization of the township solicitor to prepare the ordinance, which, while we talked about parameters around that at the last meeting, we didn't officially authorize the solicitor to do that.
Some moves?
Is there a second? I'll second.
I have some questions, Mr. Chairman. Dave, for you specifically, what exactly is this process that? Because I remember we touched base on this a couple of years back and there was some talk about a.
I think, well, there's a couple ways. First of all, it's, you know, to, an ordinance would establish legislation that would convey the law of the township, at least on those issues in terms of housing, limited in terms of anti-discrimination. Many communities now have enacted such ordinances. At the same time, they've created a human relations commission. Now, and there's different ways that that goes. Usually those are bodies that hear complaints and then report them and sometimes go through mediation. I'm not saying you go that far, you may want to. Plenty of examples in surrounding municipalities, Middletown, Yarley Borough, we drafted one at Langhorn Borough, Newtown Borough, Doylestown Borough. So there are many already on the books. They're not all identical. Some have much more active boards, so to speak, to, to review the, the, any complaints or any kind of situations where it's alleged discrimination's occurred to somebody in the protected class. But at least it's, it's something that conveys the sense of the township that this, you know, this kind of behavior can't be tolerated under certain circumstances. So, you know, my guess is for this board, if you decide to embark on that, it'll may take a while to decide how far you want to go with that, which is, that's fine. That's what part of this discussion is about, to determine, first of all, what, you know, you're gonna say certain things that probably everybody would say then, what do you do with the information once you have it, in other words? So I think that's where the, the leap is gonna be for, for a lot of board members. So, you know, we'll be happy to do, what I can provide, if, if we're authorized to do it, at least some samples for everybody to look at without having to reinvent the wheel. At least to provide you with some samples of different ordinances that, that have that so you can take a look, see what, see what they think. I know the county, for example, has had an ordinance on the books for quite some time. One of our community members is a, is a member of that, of the county HRC. So this is, it's a, we would not be the only or the first. In fact, we'd probably be, you know, catching up to a few communities frankly with this, to be honest with you. So.
I have a couple.
We're happy to present, like I said, alternatives so you can see what those look like, if that's the, the direction you give us.
Couple of follow-up questions, does the state have this in place?
It does. I think that it does not have some of the same protections on some of the LGBTQ plus. The state law is not as strong as some of the local ordinances.
Does the federal government have something in place?
It does. It, it, it has limited jurisdiction, so how it applies depends on different circumstances. There has to be, that will be under Title VII. The employer has to have a certain number of, it's usually in an employment context, sometimes in housing or other circumstances too. But the federal government does certainly enforce it and there are also certainly lawsuits to do, do so as well through different processes. But that's, I'm not saying it couldn't be done here with the federal law, but it's highly unlikely compared to other circumstances.
And just for an example, if somebody uses some type of hate speech towards another person, would that be considered, could that be considered an offense of this or?
If the hate speech is directed at somebody because of their protected class.
But is hate speech not considered free speech?
It's a typical lawyer's answer, it depends. And I, look, I, I, I'm very, feel very strongly about the First Amendment. We have to tolerate a lot in this country, that's one of the tenets of it. The question is how far does that go? And not, people say a lot of nasty things to a lot of people. It is protected, but there are circumstances when you go beyond that, when it's, you're doing it to create other, other actions.
Does that become criminal at that point, though?
It can.
If it's harassment?
Terroristic threats, harassment, the chief could talk about that, yeah, I mean.
I think from my mind, what I'm trying to avoid is a situation where one resident accuses another resident of saying something that may have been considered under this ordinance.
Right.
And now that, that resident has to go and sit before a, a human relations committee and has to be.
Yeah, I mean.
I think the whole thing is really ridiculous, to be honest with you. And that's just my opinion of it. I, I think it's really just righteous signaling, to be honest with you. I, I, it doesn't make any sense at all. I think that, I think that those classes are all protected at a federal level, at a state level, on a county level. And for us as a municipality to try to put something together is basically saying, you know, I'm not quite sure what the message is.
There are gaps in protections for non-discrimination in the workplace that are not covered by federal and state law, which is why over 99 municipalities have implemented similar ordinances many years ago. The hope when we addressed this previously was that the state would resolve many of those gaps when we looked at this issue five years ago. And that has not happened.
How about the county?
Again, it's a good question. I can't tell you that the county's resolved all the gaps, so I'd have to go back and look.
You have to look at the county.
So I mean, if you're talking about something that's specific to a workplace environment, I think that that's a completely different thing that, that, what this, that the intent of this ordinance might be.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I mean, again, just to clarify, it's not a, it's not a speech regulation in any fashion. It has, there has to be some discrimination based on, you know, an employment decision, a housing decision. It's, it's not, it's not, hey, you know, Jane Smith said something adverse that I, or.
What's the Human Relations Commission? What's, what's the implementation of that?
If you decide to go with that, it would be a board that could possibly hear complaints about that.
Yes.
You don't have to do that, or you can, or it could have limited jurisdiction.
Because there's protection now, Dave, if there is an employment issue where somebody can go as a protected class to, to the federal government and say.
No, not in all circumstances.
So what, what, what I'm saying is what jurisdiction do we have as a municipality to go after, say, a company that has, I don't want to say a company in a township because I don't want to, you know? But a, a company X in a township that is found practicing this comes, somebody comes to the township and says what?
Well, then what, what some communities do is then they take that information and, and report it to one of the enforcement agencies that, that does it. Frankly.
But can't we direct a, a resident to do that now? We have to have, we have to have an ordinance in place or a commission in place?
Yes, you can. The question is whether they would feel comfortable doing that without having some, some kind of protection of the law. I think that's, that's the, that's the way I understand it. And again, I think if, before you would direct us to drafting, what I would suggest is we could supply you with, with examples.
And that's what I asked for last time, right? When we talked about this process last time, I did point out that we weren't following our process. But before we go and, and ask you to draft something, did we feel comfortable in a type of gap analysis that counties or the state as it is now is not sufficient? And without understanding that, my concern is that we might create an inequality while we're trying to address inequality. So.
If you want us to do that work, we'd be happy to do it. I mean, I, I, I could, we could do it simultaneously, give you the examples of different ordinances that have been enacted, both at, at the municipal level and at the county level.
Dave, I'd like to understand what the county isn't doing or the state isn't doing that we feel we have to fix.
We could do that.
Suzanne, to your point, what I would appreciate as we go through this process is the, both Bucks County and Pennsylvania have their human rights committee, they, they have outreach components or arms that they can, they could come and give a presentation to the board about, about this specific issue and tell us where there are gaps and how others do it and how they, how those groups at the county and state level can interact, you know, what our options might be to interact with them. Largely, we want this to never be an issue in Lower Makefield, right? We don't want any of this to happen, that's why we're considering it. We don't always hear about a lot of it happening in Lower Makefield, thankfully, hopefully, but it happens. We, we know it hap, and in Lower Make, oh no, I'm not, I am by no means saying it doesn't. So we, but, so we want, when it happens, we want to make sure that our residents have a way to address it and.
That point, Dave, I think you said that very well. But, you know, if, if that's our concern, I don't think it's limited to just the LGBTQ plus community, which is an important community. But if we're really trying to make sure that there's no discrimination, that gap analysis may have to be broader, right? Because we wouldn't want.
I don't disagree with you at all. Yeah, I don't disagree with you at all.
So I think the great first step, rather than asking the solicitor to start drafting something that most of us don't have an understanding of what we're, what the gap analysis is or what we're.
I, I think also from a staffing standpoint, we don't have the bandwidth to even process those kinds of things at this point. Like, we, we talk about staffing and talent. Right, do we even have the staffing in place to be able to, to log complaints? Be able to take them to the right people? I think at that, at this, at this point, it's probably best for us to just refer to an agency within the county, the state, or the feds that has that bandwidth.
And that's, that's, that's an option. So, so again, we were sort of having a sidebar conversation. So a community I worked in in Dolphin County had a local human relations commission. It's one of the municipalities that, that John noted in terms of the numbers and statistics, with very limited jurisdiction. The jurisdiction was limited to the areas where there was a gap in existing law. So that, that was, so again, I, we, we just heard, well, maybe we need to be broader. That's, there, there may be a value of being broader, but then there's the capacity issues that you're talking about. So the intent of many of these is just jurisdictionally limited to where there's, where there's a gap in, in, in law. And then in circumstances where there is an existing, whether it be state law, federal law, in, again, I don't know sort of how the interface of county, county jurisdiction, you know, sort of gets in, into this, then you do just serve as largely as a referral agency. So if somebody comes and says, you know, we're experiencing gender discrimination in a private employment matter, it's okay, you need to contact the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission who has jurisdiction over this and there's state law covering that, that issue. You're just simply referring, provide, you're, you're an educational entity. There's, there's limited, limited involvement there. As I understand it, the, the intent of this is to look at where there is gap and there is, there is absolute gap as it relates to sexual orientation, sexual orientation and gender identity. There, there are no protection, there, there's very limited to no protections in existing state law on the, on those two issues. Again, in the case of the example I just articulated, the municipality chose to, again, limit its jurisdiction and then even codify the fact that it would go away once there was the appropriate amendment to state law to provide. It would no longer be, because you do need to be concerned where there's cross jurisdiction. Then there's jurisdictional confusion that starts going on and then you're getting into things that, to your point, we may not have the capacity to adjudicate. It, it's just to address that, that, that gap.
Would it be better served for the board to write a letter to our state senator and our state rep to push that type of?
We've done that.
Okay.
And the question is, is, do you, do you agree that this is an issue that needs to be?
I don't know that it is.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't know. There's no, there's no hard data that there, that it is, I mean.
And I, and again, I'll just speak to different community, right? This is a different community. This was a community right outside of, outside of the city of Harrisburg. They had one case that came before them and it was jurisdictionally misplaced. Like it was, it was, it was a zoning matter, not something that was covered by the, the entity. But it does have a forum for people to come to in the event. And I'm not suggesting that there won't be complaints here. There could be complaints here, who, who, I'm sure, I mean, I would be naive to say that there's not discrimination occurring in our community. But just so you have an understanding of magnitude, a lot of these are not very active. A lot of them are just, again, it provides a forum and it's an educational entity that's communicating what's available in, in the Commonwealth. So.
Are you aware of?
Oh, yes.
Within Lower Makefield Township? Enough to the point where, have they been reported to the police? Have they been reported to?
They wouldn't have the ability to, they wouldn't have standing.
They say discrimination is not, have to be criminal.
Right. So, but, okay, so have they filed a civil suit? Has there been civil, because you can chase that civilly too, right? You can have civil recourse.
If you go in that direction, one of the different commissions, whether it's a PHRC, if, if it's an employment situation, EEOC, if it's not one of those, that may be one of the problems is there's not a forum for them to, to, to do. And again, I agree with your assessment, it's probably too early to do an ordinance, but we would be happy to supervisor Blundy's point, at least prepare the gap analysis so we can see what, if there is something. And then some of your questions will be answered, maybe they won't be, but there's that, that ability to do that.
And I will go with the quick Mr. Google and tell you about the Bucks County Human Relations Council, which says it was established, a countywide council dedicated to any discrimination based on age, race, color, gender, religion, creed, socioeconomic, sexual orientation, ancestry, handicap, or disability. I think it's probably exists already, but the gap analysis, the education, Dan, I love that. I wasn't aware of that. I think that would be a great thing because not only would we learn, but then the community could learn as well.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not opposed to awareness or any type of education from, from a public standpoint. I'm, I'm, thought of an ordinance of that magnitude, just in my mind, really scares me. I, I think that it can be.
Yeah, I mean, again, there is a resource at the PHRC level to, to, they, they happily come and talk to you about the existing gaps and, and what other communities have done within this area for general education.
Yeah.
Big gap, honey.
I can only tell you that I, I know of an employment discrimination case in Lower Makefield. It hasn't been recent, it's been many years. I don't have a total number of those cases. But I can tell you, we want to make sure we have the resources to make sure that those folks have advocates. And also too, that our community is advocates and welcoming to everybody.
Yeah, oh, no, I don't.
And so that's.
The interpreted that that's.
Right, yeah. But, and that's why, you know, discussions about, in the last discussion, there was this, how do we work with, for example, the county HRC? Could we fill gaps if, where gaps are and relate to HRC? That's an option. But I, I guess what I'm saying is it seems like there needs to be more education for folks, for them to feel more comfortable about even considering an ordinance. And I, I wonder if that's because you might not have directly observed issues or it's not something that affects you? That, that could be the case and I, and I don't want to presume where you're coming.
Anything affects a resident, it affects me. So it has nothing to do with me specifically, but if there are residents that are being affected by this, I have not heard of one, is what my point is.
Okay.
You have.
Yes.
You may have, the same person?
No.
Okay, so a different.
We know, yeah. I won't tell you, I mean, yeah. I'm almost certain it's not the same, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, again, that's, the, the, the objective is to make sure that our residents are protected and they feel like they're in a safe environment. I don't know if you're creating an ordinance of this magnitude necessarily creates that environment. I think it's more of a righteous, it makes you feel like you're creating that environment, but I think that it's not necessarily creating that environment. We don't have the bandwidth to support it, right? We don't have the staffing to support it. If somebody comes to the township.
We're not there yet and if you want me to do the gap, us, let's do the gap analysis first, we could do that. We're not there yet and if you want me to do the gap, the us, let's do the gap analysis first. We could do that and if there.
But if, even if there are gaps, we don't, how are we supporting any of that?
Well, maybe as, 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 as Dave said, it may be more of a referral, uh, process. You may have people like a, a, a board or something.
Are we doing that for all protected classes? Cause if we're not, then Suzanne's point then.
It's for the gap analysis. No, we wouldn't have to. If it's only for those that aren't protected and then other people who would say, I have this discrimination, you say, well, then there, there is, there's another agency that can, that has jurisdiction over that.
So maybe we should do a broader analysis of what protected classes have, we have gaps in all protected classes. Yeah. Well, then no, this is specific to LBG, uh, LGBTQ, us, right?
Inclusive.
Yeah. So I would say let's do it to all protected classes. If we're going to approach it that way, let's not say one protective class is more important than another. They all should be the same.
What we would do is I think we would look at the EEOC and their jurisdiction under Title VII and the different anti-discrimination laws, disability, uh, age, uh, uh, and then of course, and Title VII encompasses some of the things we just talked about. And then of course, then there's a PHRC, which is from the PHRA, which is the act. But that does have some gaps in the county and say, these are what they do. This is what they address. And this is their jurisdiction or a limited jurisdiction. For example, federal law on employment depends on how many employees you have. That, that's one of the things. So if that's limited to employment and then get to the ground level here, as, as Dave said, and talk about what, example, what, what his former township did and, and see if we can, you know, at least provide you with that analysis and then we can have that discussion.
Yeah. I, I, I think the gap analysis coupled with a presentation from PHRC will, will be very educational. It may be eye-opening depending on perspectives and, and experiences, right? And it'll allow all of us to first, it, it'll allow all of us to understand what is going on, whether it's in the Commonwealth or in the township, whether we know about it or not, because they do track this stuff. They do look at statistics. So, you know, what my gut tells me isn't necessarily correct. I'll, you know, but they'll be able to provide hard data, hard facts about what happens, how it happens and what, how, how we as a township can help to address it, whether it's sort of a straight, you know, whether it's a referral system or a, or some other system, we'll be able to help. I think they'll help us to develop a framework for addressing it that makes sense. That won't overwhelm anyone and provides the benefit to our residents that, that they're looking for.
Fair enough.
Can I? Then.
I'm sorry.
Dave Kratzner, do you think it would be possible to make sure that our website, um, includes this kind of valuable information? So that people who feel like they have been discriminated against based on whatever reason, we could have a quick, quick link to some of the resources.
Sure, sure. Yeah, we can do that. Yep, absolutely.
We don't have a formal motion on the floor right now and I, and, um, you know, the motion could be.
Yeah, I stand corrected. There is a motion on the floor.
Oh, there is?
Yeah. Dan made it and you.
Okay.
Yes.
And I, I would suggest, uh.
Well, perhaps it, it might be, maybe it's a, it'd be appropriate to amend the ordinance and, and can I offer a suggestion?
Go right ahead.
Um, to authorize a township solicitor to prepare a, a gap analysis of LGBTQ plus initiative, uh, inclusive local non-discrimination, pardon me. Uh, gap analysis of LGBTQIA plus inclusive, uh, communities with respect to, uh, housing, employment. Uh, what else? Uh, those are the major ones.
Public accommodations.
Public accommodations, yeah. Um, and, uh, provide recommendations uh, for policy options based on those gap analysis. So if they come out and say, we've reviewed this based on what we've seen in other places, here's the, here is suggested resolution slash ordinance slash policy or website, um, addition that that could be done as well. Really long amendment.
Would not.
I know, sorry.
I would not.
Okay. So let me, let me try something else. Um, direct our solicitor to, uh, I'm not making the motion yet. I'm trying to get it back. Okay. Um, direct our solicitor to conduct a gap analysis relative to, um, pro- protective classes related to, uh, workplace, public accommodations and housing discrimination.
In Bucks County?
In, in Bucks.
Well, because we're not, we're not asking Dave to search the federal regs and this.
Right, right, right. Yeah.
Yeah, that's fair.
Well, it would be one.
Lower Makefield.
Is that agreeable?
Well, and recommendate and policy.
And, and policy recommendate. Is that agreeable?
Don't, I'm not giving over to the solicitor, um, that he should come up with policy recommendations. I think he should provide us information so that we could discuss how we want to move forward. I don't think that's an appropriate.
Policy options?
I don't think that's an appropriate ask of the solicitor.
Yeah, I think what you want right now, this is my thought, is you want just to tell us what the law is and where, where it may be empty. And then you could decide what you want to do or direct us further to look at what the options may be after having further discussion. Like what is it that's not protected out there that needs to be protected?
So more of a directive, not a, not an actual motion?
Well, it's a motion to direct me to do that.
Okay.
One thing, yeah. I, I, I want the, I want the gap analysis, Suzanne, everything we've been talking about. I would like, um, as part of the information that's provided, maybe some examples.
Absolutely.
It, it, these aren't policy recommendations, just examples of what others have done that we could use to progress the conversation. Is that agreeable to everybody? And then.
We want all that before we have that educational component.
Well, I, I, I.
Conditions that might be coming up and work that would be started and restarted and, you know, not.
To your point, no, I'm right there with you. To, so in a parallel pa- I don't know if this is a separate motion, if I could put them all in the same. I would like, um, to, I guess, direct the manager to, uh, invite, uh, representatives from PHRC and the Bucks County, uh, Human Rights Commission to a board of supervisors meeting to present on the issue.
Those will be two different motions.
It would be two.
I think they're, I mean, they're, they're related, obviously.
They are, but I just want to make sure, I'll make them clean.
So first one is just the, the gap analysis.
I would like to do them in the same time period.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Right? So we have everything.
Add the agenda. I'm confused. Can we just ask Dave to do things? Must we actually move? Because then do we have to amend the agenda?
Well, you, you already have, you already have a, a motion to authorize us, uh, to prepare the ordinance. So this would be a related, at least you put.
Okay, not DT.
No.
Dan made two motions, one to DT.
Yeah, no, I mean. I haven't made them yet officially. I just.
You can direct me without going through a motion if that's, if that's the preference of the.
All right. So the, first, I'll get the first motion out of the way. Mr. Chair, like to make a motion to direct our solicitor, solicitor to conduct a gap analysis related to protected classes associated with, with, um, workplace discrimination, uh, public accommodations and housing. And to provide examples of what other communities in Bucks County have, have done relative to these issues.
That's the most.
I'll second that. Is anybody else comfortable with that?
And we're okay. That's an appropriate agenda item because it's really just a modification of 12D.
Yes.
Any other comments before I call a question?
Public com- public comment?
Any public comment? No. Call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Now, the second part of that, do we, I think Suzanne, you were saying, do we really need a motion for that? Can we just dir- direct the, the man in the corner over there?
Happy to do it.
To reach out?
Can, can we also ask, um, Dave and, and the two Daves actually to, to involve chief? To see if there was any reports that were filed with the police during that time period for data?
Sure.
Thank you.
See, moving on.
I just have just a couple, just a general sort of informational items that, that aren't noted. Um, one, uh, and I can start putting this on, um, you know, the, the, the agenda either monthly or periodically. Um, just wanted to make note of, um, uh, the Lower Makefield Township, uh, Community Trust. Um, again, as the, the board is aware and as members of the public are aware, um, the, um, net proceeds from the sanitary sewer sale, um, the bulk of those net proceeds were put into a, into a trust. Uh, the, uh, deposits of, into the trust uh, were twenty-one million dollars. Um, at this point, uh, we've had a positive interest growth, uh, in the trust assets. The current, uh, balance as of, uh, February 29th, uh, of this year uh, is a little bit in excess of, of twenty-three million dollars. So twenty-three million, uh, one hundred and six thousand eight, uh, twenty-three sixty-four. Um, so again, to the extent that there's interest, uh, in understanding what's happening with those net proceeds, again, they are invested consistent with the investment policy statement that the board has, uh, adopted. Uh, and there is positive growth in assets that's occurring in that trust, trust instrument. So I just wanted to make.
Plus five hundred grand is, uh, this month. Is that what I saw?
Correct, almost six hundred thousand dollars.
It's a heck of a month.
Yep. Um, and then just a general update, uh, regarding, um, an April had left, but, uh, some of the additional work that Land Studies, uh, was doing, uh, as part of, uh, their change order that the board had authorized. Um, they were actually, uh, scheduled today to be out, uh, to do the, um, uh, survey work that was part of that, uh, change of, of scope. Um, I don't know whether that occurred today because of the weather, but, um, uh, um, that's, that's in the works. And then, um, some of the geo-probing that was contemplated, uh, to be done, uh, again, to assess, um, sort of the, the drainage characteristics of the soils uh, on the area, uh, north, uh, and south of, of the Maple Vale neighborhood that the township owns. Uh, those are scheduled, uh, to occur. Um, probes are scheduled to occur on, on March the 19th and March the 20th. Uh, and then folks may see, uh, them out on the 18th, just doing flagging. So that work is, is progressing and, uh, once that work is done, um, obviously they'll be reporting back to us and then we can continue sort of our efforts in trying to address some of the concerns that have been experienced and expressed relative to drainage in that area of the township. So that's all I have.
Onto agenda item thirteen, solicitors report.
Yes, briefly. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, there was an executive session was started tonight at six thirty. All board members who were present at this meeting were present at the executive session along with Mr. Kratzner, Chief Kaluzi, myself, and for a time, uh, Ms. Tierney. I'm, as we're discussed, related to personnel litigation and informational matters. And the executive session concluded just before this meeting started. Uh, the only thing under my report specifically is to consider resolution twenty-four dash eight, authorizing the approval of an easement termination and release agreement as related to the former Bright Farms. That's a seven forty-eight Stony Hill Road. Just very briefly description. Uh, when slight Bright Farms, uh, they were awarded the, the use of that property. An easement had to be created for them to have access to it. Uh, they no longer are there. Uh, there's no, there was no easement before they were there and there's no really need for one now. Uh, obviously, uh, the stewards, uh, the farmers who, uh, farm the area behind there have other access to it. So recommendation is to terminate the lease, uh, and release agreement as indicated.
Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Your second?
There are no second? I guess it dies for lack of a second.
Is there a second?
So just, just to provide maybe some additional context. So the original easement, uh, as, as Dave said, uh, was for purposes of, of the, uh, uh, the greenhouses that, that Bright Farm, uh, Farms was, was operating. The existing easement was very sort of restrictive in terms of use. It wasn't, it wasn't like a general easement or general access easement. It, it actually was specific to the operation of a greenhouse on that, on that property. So I just want to make sure that there's, you know, a general understanding that it isn't, is in it, it is not a broad use, uh, a, a easement that exists on the property. It's very restrictive in terms of its, its, its use. And so that's in part, um, so if there's thinking like, well, could it be used for something else? It, it, the, the actual easement, uh, agreement is very limited in terms of use.
What if a future board decides to grant greenhouse, uh, use on that space again?
You, you, they, that board could.
Negotiate another easement.
Could do it, but.
If we release this one.
If you would release this one, yes.
My only question was, and I think you've answered it, Dave, but I'll ask it anyway. Might this easement be useful to the work being done, um, to, by the ad hoc or whatever we're calling it these days, property commission? Might we want to leave it in place because it could in order to their benefit?
I'll, I'll.
Loud, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, I think it, I think if it, I think if it's limited, I mean, if, if they wanted to recommend the establishment of a greenhouse on that property at that location, then yes. But it, it's, again, it, if the thought is that, um, you know, it provides an alternative means of access to Patterson Farm for the continued farming operation that's occurring on there, the, the answer to that is no. It's, it's very restrictive in terms of what the easement, the purpose of the easement can be used for. What's the advantage of terminating the easement?
Yeah, I mean, I could even make the argument, or someone can make the argument that, uh, the current property owner, because the purpose of the easement no longer exists, could, if, if we refuse to do it, they could go to court and force the issue. I'm not saying they would, but I, that, that's, I think, a, a.
My concern is less about allowing a future greenhouse because I don't really, at this point in time, I don't really like that idea, but who knows? Things change. Um, my concern is have they done everything they're supposed to do to allow us to release it? Have they remediated everything? I've, I've heard people complain that you can't farm there anymore. Um, where you can't do this, you can't do that, or it looks terr- you know, I, I haven't been there myself, so this is just me saying what I've, what I've read or heard. I just want to make sure we're not releasing them from an easement agreement when they may still be liable for other things. Does that allow them to, if, if we don't think they've remediated it back to its pre-greenhouse condition?
Yeah. So, so this isn't releasing Bright Farms of any obligation. This, this is releasing the easement on the, on the, on the adjacent property or through the adjacent property. So they're, they're mutually exclu- like they're, they're separate, separate issues. Um, I think we did pull, uh.
There were papers in that easement though, weren't there?
Uh.
There was, uh, let me back up. My understanding is there were some infrastructure that existed.
I mean, it does.
Easement that was to be removed and remediated. So, but I just want to make sure all that's taken care of and then.
I mean, if you wanted to table this until we look into it, I suppose we could. I, I, that, that would be something, I guess.
I have a second yet, so I don't know that there's anything to table.
Well, yeah, yeah, you're too correct. Yeah, there is no motion that there's no second. So.
That would be my concern. I, 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 I'm not as concerned, but I think to Suzanne's point about the ad hoc committee, I think any, any use that they might recommend in that area, whether it's greenhouse or not, um, would probably be something unique or new i- is, is how I'd look at it. So I don't know that this would necessarily help anyone. Um, or if there was a future board that wanted a greenhouse for something else, um, you know. If you want. Yeah, I, I think, I think spatial, spatially, they, they might want to look at it differently and just negotiate a new one. So I don't, I don't know that it helps anybody to keep it as is. I, I.
That was, uh, Mr. Kratzner's point too. I think that's exactly the, the.
Yeah.
Point of that.
And we don't want it lingering in the future.
You, you don't want it hanging around on, on paper because it'll mess things up for some, something at some point. Cause.
Who made the initial, uh, supervisor Blundy made?
Right, Blundy did.
I'll second it then.
Okay.
All those in favor? Any questions? Call the question?
So we don't, we don't know. I guess we don't know whether or not it hurts the.
I don't.
We lose leverage with the, with the.
We lose.
Not if it's for the, not if it's for the limited purpose of accessing the greenhouse that no longer exists.
Yeah, I, it. I mean, if they didn't remediate it accordingly, we still, we could go after them.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
From parcel, yeah.
Yeah.
And we created the easement in the first place, correct?
For their benefit, yes. For, for the benefit of Bright Farms, yeah.
And, and the property reverts back to just farm use, no access.
Yes, yes.
All right.
Is your mic?
I, oh, sorry. Yeah, I will eat. So the property would revert back to no access, just, all right, that's enough reason for me to be in favor of it right there.
Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right.
Um, Sony hearing board, there is one matter, Mr. Chair. Um, appeal number Z dash twenty-four dash six Whiteside slash Conivas for the property located in nine twenty-seven Piper Lane. Ex parcel two zero dash zero five five dash one nine four. Applicant requests a variance for an in-ground pool from township zoning orders two hundred dash twenty-three capital B, which would increase the impervious surface from the existing twenty-three point two percent to twenty-five point eight percent. Rating percentage of allowable amount and township zoning orders two, two hundred and seventy capital A to allow the pool to be located in the front yard, whether rear or side yard is otherwise required. It's a corner lot. So I think that we, we probably seen the, the map for that. We would recommend participation for the identical reasons we've recommended in, in, uh, other cases before this. And for example, last night, the zoning hearing board, uh, imposed conditions on a property owner consistent with our request and participation. So we would just, uh, recommend that we do that, uh, in this particular circumstance.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to participate.
Second.
Uh, any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And that is all I have.
Uh, we don't have any items for. Uh, we don't have any items for community development, so supervisor reports. I don't have one. Planning Commission meets on Monday.
Yeah, the uh, the only other zoning hearing board matter was the Doggy Daycare, and that's been continued so they can talk more with the township about stuff.
I have nothing to report at this time.
I have no report.
Uh, we don't have any other business. Moving on to appointments, reimportments to boards and commissions. Are there any uh motions related to that?
I think that we have a motion from this earlier interview of Ms. Monique Mitchell.
I'll second that. All those in favor of Ms. Mitchell for Environmental Advisory Council alternate signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Uh, any additional public comment on any items? Uh, nobody on the phone, right? Okay, uh, with that, we'll adjourn. Thank you.
Nice one.